Third meeting of the City of Eureka City Council. Thank you for coming today. It's nice to see all of you with masks on. I'm sorry, I'd rather see your faces, but we are where we are, aren't we? I would like to start by calling a roll call, please. Mayor Seaman, here.
Councilmember Castellano, here.
Councilmember Moulton, here.
Councilmember Arroyo, here.
Councilmember Bauer, here.
Councilmember Bregel, here.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like our sitting Coast Guard Officer Natalie Arroyo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Would you do that? Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Arroyo. And I also am going to ask Councilmember Arroyo, actually, she asked to read the proclamation, which I think is very nice, we should be reading it to her as well as the rest of the Coast Guard members. But would you mind reading the proclamation for Coast Guard men?
Thank you for letting me read it, Mayor. And I understand that we have Commander Joe Matthews here to receive it. Please go ahead and come on up. This is a proclamation in recognition of U.S. Coast Guard Month and the City of Eureka's 21st anniversary as a Coast Guard city, August 2021. Whereas the Coast Guard is one of America's armed forces and traces its founding to August 4th, 1790, when Congress authorized construction of 10 vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect the collection of federal revenue. And whereas the Coast Guard is a maritime military multi-mission service, unique amongst the U.S. military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters. And whereas 26 cities have taken strides to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard men and women assigned to their cities, the Coast Guard has in turn recognized these cities as official Coast Guard cities as a way to show their appreciation for the city's efforts to extend so many considerations to the Coast Guard family and their dependents. And whereas Humboldt County, along with Mendocino and Delmarque Counties, are served by the proud Coast Guard service members of Sector Humboldt Bay and Sector San Francisco, many of whom live in the greater Eureka area, enroll their children in Eureka City schools, and are an integral part of our wonderful community. And whereas on June 3rd, 2000, the City of Eureka was designated as the second official Coast Guard city and was re-designated in 2011 and 2019, and has taken great pride in the contributions of the Coast Guard to the community. The City of Eureka is proud and grateful to celebrate 21 years as a Coast Guard city. Now therefore, I, Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2021 as U.S. Coast Guard Month and recognize the Coast Guard's many contributions to the well-being and vibrancy of our community.
It's great to see you again, Commander Matthews.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, Councilmembers, City of Eureka, on behalf of the 235 members we have serving the greater Eureka area, I thank you very much for this. You know, as you know, last summer, things were delayed a little bit. We're really looking forward to the activities this summer. You know, everybody transfers every two to four years. So between last summer and this summer, we're looking at, you know, a third to almost a half of our workforce is new to this community. And the timing of this is just perfect. So July is our busy month of people moving from all over the country, and they're just arriving now to the City of Eureka and looking at areas and restaurants. And it's just a, it's a great time for these events. And we have the barbecue, and the zoo, the golf, the steak night. Everybody's talking about it at work, we're all looking forward to it. And it's just a great way to feel part of the community. When you show up, you don't know anything about the new town you live in. And these are just great events, everybody's looking forward to them. And I appreciate your support. Over the last 21 years, it's incredible. And it goes a lot beyond just the month of August. It's a year-round commitment. Our members are, you know, as Councilman Arroyo just said, we do search and rescue and aids to navigation and marine environmental protection. And those missions were gone for long periods of time. And it's our family members that we leave behind. And it feels good, me too. Like, I know that when I leave town, my family's being taken care of here in the community. So it's very much appreciated, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to reiterate some of those things that he mentioned for our Coast Guard activities. They're coming up. Tuesday, obviously, is the proclamation. I believe tomorrow is actually the Coast Guard birthday, which they get to celebrate all on their own, they don't have any obligations with us. On Friday, August 20th, that's going to be Coast Guard versus the City of Eureka softball game. It's going to be over at Kennedy Field, it's a ton of fun. And the Navy League hosts a barbecue, then have ice cream. On Thursday, the 26th, that is the Cook Your Own Steak Night that's hosted by Old Town Eureka and Southwest Rotaries at the Elk Lodge. And that is at 5:00 PM. In addition, the City of Eureka is going to be celebrating with Coast Guard families by donating zoo and golf passes for their enjoyment when they can make it. So we really appreciate having you here, we love being a Coast Guard city. And thank you so much for coming out today. Next, on our agenda, we have another proclamation. And this one is going to be read by Councilmember Bregel. Carolyn, did you want to come up?
So this is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Charles Luther Bean Jr., August 3rd, 2021. Whereas the City of Eureka wishes to acknowledge the dedicated service and commitment of Charlie Bean, recognizing outstanding service to the citizens of Eureka. And whereas Charlie Bean was born on September 12th, 1956, in Eureka, California, a proud member of the Yurok Tribe, graduated from Hoopa Valley High School in 1974, served in the U.S. Army, and while work took him to Colorado with the U.S. Forest Service in China to teach English, he always returned to Eureka. And whereas Mr. Bean served his community as a tireless advocate for accessibility in all means of life, regardless of ability, served as Executive Director of California In-Home Health Support Services, Consumer Alliance, CICA, and worked for and closely with Tri-County Independent Living. And whereas Mr. Bean was a valuable, very valuable, member of the Steering Committee, oh, he's just very valuable, the very valuable of the Steering Committee for the Community Services Department Sequoia Park Improvements Project. And whereas the City of Eureka is a better place, certainly, due to Charlie Bean's dedicated support to the city and surrounding community. Now therefore, I, Councilmember Kim Bregel, on behalf of the City of Eureka and the mayor, do hereby commend Charlie Bean for his loyalty and lifetime of dedication to the citizens of Eureka. We extend our sincere appreciation for his many years of distinguished service to his community and offer our sincere heartfelt condolences to the family and loved ones of Charlie Bean.
Charlie would have loved this, when he was told about it by a neighbor, when he was told about it by a neighbor of ours, and Marion, it was toward the end of his life. He said, "That's right on," which was his go-to phrase. But he said it was really nice, and he had hoped to read this. Wasn't meant to be, because he passed on the 16th of July peacefully. But I thank you, because it's true. Everyone that Charlie touched will miss him terribly throughout the state of California because of the difficulties that he endured from the age of 18 on. He was able to relate to all people with all disabilities, and that was his goal, to help them, to get the help that he needed. And if he couldn't do it, he would work tirelessly to find someone who could and put them in touch with it. So thank you, thank you so much. He would have, he would have really liked this. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you so much. Carolyn, do you have anybody else that you'd like to say a few words?
Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, everybody. So I just wanted to acknowledge that Charlie was more than just an advocate for the handicapped. Charlie is the reason why this is here, so that he could roll up in his wheelchair, because at the time, people had to take this off, hand it to him. It was a big, it was a big fuss, right? So, you know, small things make a difference in your life. But Charlie was more than that. And I don't think, because of the fact that you guys didn't know him and many of his other hats that he wore, I wanted to read just a little bit about what he, it's a very short one. He was a big advocate for economic development, serving as the webmaster for the Humboldt Bay Harbor Working Group, which some of the staff have attended out at the Smoke Cook House. He posted videos of our noon meetings that were held at the Smoke Cook House, starting in 2013, continuing all the way through 2020, when the COVID happened. So there were a total of 69 informative, community-oriented meetings that had everything to do with, anything to do with the harbor and harbor development and economic benefit to the whole area. So he was of invaluable help to us, setting out monthly, he sent out monthly newsletters to our mailing list to let them know what was being served for lunch, who was presenting, and the subject of the upcoming meetings. He wasn't, when Charlie could no longer attend the meetings himself, which sometimes he was in the hospital, that kind of thing, Carolyn would step up and come out in video and then bring it back. And then Charlie from his hospital bed, or wherever he was, home, in bed, he would put it up on our website. So Carolyn said she really enjoyed some of those meetings, because it was very informative, and she enjoyed them a lot. So he was an inspiration and an example of the indomitable spirit that should inspire, we should all aspire to achieve. He represented the best of us, and his legacy will not be forgotten. We are grateful for all he's given to enrich our community. Thank you. Also, in case anybody on council cares about all of the meetings that were held and all the people who spoke and all the issues that were brought about our harbor and how it could enrich our area, I brought a copy of all of the meetings and the speakers thereof. I'm going to give them to Pam. If anybody's interested, I'm sure she'll be happy to make some copies. And Charlie was instrumental in getting all of this to happen. So thanks for listening, you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Marion. And thank you so much for coming. And Natalie wants to say, Councilmember Arroyo wants to say something too.
I just wanted to thank you for coming to talk about Charlie and to receive the proclamation. And I was fortunate to serve on the Board of the Humboldt Trails Council with Charlie Bean for several years. And like Marion said, he was so much more than an advocate for those who are using wheelchairs and mobility devices. You know, he was always that, and was willing to speak up and say, you know, "That's a crack of hooey," about some plans that people had or, you know, designs that were meant to serve the disabled community and really, you know, sometimes didn't. But, you know, he was so much more than that. He was fiery and always had a smile and a laugh, and just had some wild and entertaining stories. So he lived a lot of life. And he had just a great way of saying, like, "All right, well, what are we going to do now? Like, let's move on." In meetings where people would get kind of flummoxed. So I really appreciated that spirit that he brought. And I know that you had the fortune of serving with him on committees. And yeah, he was just a joy to be around, an absolute joy. So, thank you.
Thank you again. It hit everybody hard to hear first that he was sick. And then so suddenly, it felt like he passed on. Well, I have to move on now, it feels weird to move on. But I wanted to talk about a few things from my mayor's report. One of them is that we are currently witnessing an increased number of positive cases. And in fact, the number of patients requiring hospitalization for severe complications from COVID-19 right now is higher than any time during the pandemic. So we have, and we also have a substantial number of patients requiring care in the ICU, which is having an effect on all of the hospital mechanisms right now. For the city, as a way to track the virus concentration in our community, we have been using a sampling program funded by the Federal Health and Human Services Department to measure wastewater influent for the presence of the COVID-19 virus coming into the Elk River Wastewater Treatment Facility. So to be clear, this is water coming into the facility, this is not our drinking water. But what we have found is that the virus concentration is higher than 99% of all quantifiable samples collected nationwide in the past six weeks. So clearly, this is not getting better. This is getting to be as bad as it's been. So thank you very much for following protocol, not just here, but maybe out in the community. Even if folks aren't asking you to wear a mask, if you do, it will help ease the spread of such a just virulent, virulent disease or virus. Last week, I went to dinner with several folks from the zoo, the Zoo Foundation, and the AZA, which is the Aquarium and Zoological Association. They were here at the zoo to do the accreditation for our facility. It is one of the toughest accreditation certifications to receive for a zoo. And we have received it in the past. And talking to the folks who came to review it, they had nothing but great things to say. Of course, we're not going to know the results of that accreditation for a while. They have to send it off to somebody else. But we're just really grateful that we have folks at the zoo who are not only, the thing that's great about the zoo is that in addition to thinking about tourism, the AZA really proves that we're, and shows that we're taking care of the animals that are in our facilities as well. So that's a really important thing. I also got to cut the ribbon for the new playground at the Sequoia Park. It's Sequoia Park, it's a five to 12-year-old, very adventuresome, fun park. That was a lot of fun, and I'm really looking forward to the next couple of phases as they grow out. And I'm continuing to meet with our Traffic Safety Task Force. Every once in a while, I like to bring that up. It is coming to a close in October. We recently had a small group meeting with Eddie Alexander to begin talking about campaigns to address speeding specifically. Speaking of speeding, we've been hearing from quite a lot of people who are not used to the bulb-outs yet. And maybe they're a little frustrated that it causes them to slow down to make a turn. But given our accident record, I think that it's doing what it's supposed to do. And finally, I went on a tour with Nordic Aqua Farms on their new development site. The harbor did a lot to clean it up from the original mess that was left when the pulp mill closed. But Nordic will really do a lot to get rid of the remaining toxic stuff that's out at the site. They are continuing to do tours. So if you would like to go and see what they're doing and learn more about their farm, you can find them, just look up Nordic Aqua Farms and give them a call. And I'm sure they will be happy to set you up with a tour. And that is my mayor's report, so thank you very much. And now we have a presentation. We have our Economic Development Manager, Swan Asbury, here to talk about Eureka Street Art Festival.
Mayor, before we do that, just a quick item of routine business. The report out of closed session, no reportable actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am presenting about the 2021 Eureka Street Art Festival, which starts this week, starts this Saturday. It's going to be going August 7th through the 14th. And this year's festival is focused on the 101 corridor along Fourth and Fifth Streets. And we are creating over 10,000 square feet of public art this year, which is a lot for us. That's the most we've ever done, so it's pretty exciting. This is the map for this year's festival. It's inside our program, which I have for you all up there. And we have some up here, if anyone in the audience is interested. And it's also on the city, no, it's not on the city website. It's on the eurekastreetartfestival.com website. And these are also located at the Visitor Center and City Hall and the Humboldt Cider Tap Room. And then once the festival starts, they'll be out with the artist bios. And so people are encouraged to take themselves on self-guided walking tours. We have all the existing public art that's out there also mapped, so you can see what we already have and what's being added. I want to mention that this year, we're selling our merchandise at the Eureka Visitor Center. This is important, because usually, we depend on the block party for revenue to generate for the next year's festival. So this year, we're really dependent on our merchandise sales and our donations from our sponsors. So I'm going to walk through the map and the walls and the artists and give you all the scoop. So starting with Fourth and A Street, an artist named Julia Morgan is going to be painting a mural. She's from Arcata. And then Councilmember Moulton is going to be repainting this whale mural on the corner of Fifth and A Streets. This is a picture of her painting it a few years ago. And she's going to be repainting it for us. We try to maintain existing public art, not just create new art. We want to, every year, touch up an existing mural. Robert Robot Adams is going to be painting a mural on this roll-down door on the Kinetic Museum. Tony Diaz is going to be painting on the wall of, it's a business named Moka that's going to be opening here, it used to be the Ethiopian Cafe. And then we have a mother-son partnership this year. Diana Lynn and Calder Johnson are going to be partnering on a mural on the side of North Coast Repertory Theater on the D Street Wall. And they put together this mural on the back a couple of years ago. And the theater as a whole has been incredibly supportive of the festival and just really appreciate their participation. And then we have an area that has four murals happening. So I want to start by talking about this big one on Ellis Engineering. This year's theme is a welcoming and wayfinding theme. And Jenna Katzos, one of our organizers, is going to be painting this mural. She has acted as an organizer for the past few years, and this year, we're happy to have her act as an artist as well. She is a full-time illustrator, and so this is a good year without the block party to have her lend her talent to us. What's also exciting about this mural is that it coordinates with our new updated wayfinding kiosks. And so I think that's a really unique way for people, as they're coming through Eureka and 101, a lot of wayfinding seems to be really generic in a lot of cities, and this one seems really authentic to Eureka. Next to Jenna is going to be Murda Silva on the smaller wall right here. And then Gina Tuzi will be painting on the back of Soulshine Arts. And then Dave Kim will be painting on the side of Savage Henry. And we've had a couple of really great collaborations this year, including one with the Eureka Chinatown Project. They've completely organized this mural done by Dave Kim. And he's coming to us from Oakland, all of our other artists are local. So we're excited to welcome him. We also collaborated with the Clark Museum. They've completely coordinated having this mural that was painted in 2000 by Brian Tripp and Almy Allen, being moved to the wall of the Clark Museum along Opera Alley. And seven native artists are going to be repainting it during the festival. And then we've also been partnering with the County of Humboldt. And a large mural is going to be going on this wall of the courthouse. This is our largest mural to date, it was designed by Lucas Thornton. And he's partnering with Blake Reagan. And we're really excited to see this come to life. And then this year, we also created a mural apprentice program. So a lot of artists try to break into being a mural artist. And it's a hard thing to get started at, there's like a lot of tricks to the trade. And so this year, we have this program, it was sponsored by the Humboldt Area Foundation. And so we have seven apprentice artists that will be paired up with existing muralists and helping. So how do people participate in the festival? The biggest way is to join us on our daily art walks. So starting August 9th through the 14th, every day at 5:30, we will be having a walking tour, starting from the Humboldt Cider Tap Room at 517 Ave Street. And we walk the whole route of the festival, and all the artists are present, and they talk about their process and the public art in Eureka, and you can see the progression of the murals. And this year, because the route is longer than past years, we're going to be alternating our route every other day. So you could come one day and see half, and then come the other day and see the other half if you want. And then because we're not having a block party, we're really trying to promote what other events are happening during the festival. And so if any businesses have specials or anything that they're doing that's happening during the festival, we have it listed on our website, and we'll be promoting that throughout the week. And then we're also encouraging businesses to paint their windows. And so if any businesses are interested, they can reach out to us. And we have a catalog of local artists that are interested in painting windows, and we're happy to play matchmaker and help facilitate that in any way possible. And then lastly, just follow us on social media. If you follow us on Instagram or Facebook or hashtag, really, you can see what's going on and participate, and it just makes it more social. And then lastly, I just want to really acknowledge all of our sponsors that make this possible. We have a ton of sponsors, every year, new sponsors get added to it. And it always surprises us who sponsors us, and we're really grateful for it. And the Ink People, we are a dream maker through the Ink People. And then lastly, I really want to recognize Jenna Katzos and Michelle Cartlidge. They have volunteered countless hours on these festivals every year for years, and they just deserve a lot of praise for that, so.
Actually, Jenna or Michelle, do you guys want to come up and add anything to the presentation?
I'll just say that we're super excited. We were able to keep the festival going last year, even through COVID. We're still in the pandemic, and we're able to keep it going this year just with some adaptations and whatnot. And so really excited about this year. The 101 corridor is super heavily traveled, and there's going to be so many eyes on these murals. And just hopefully, we'll get people to be a little curious about Eureka if they're traveling through, so that they'll want to stop and explore a bit. So hope to see you out there.
I think Swan covered it. But I'd just like to do a big thank you for the City of Eureka to be so supportive of this festival. I think it's a great addition to the community. And even, you know, our first year, it was bigger and better than what we had ever expected or thought that it could be. And the community seems very appreciative of it. So just thank you for your support and allowing this to happen in our community.
I think we should be thanking you. I know this is a passion project for you guys, and we're really grateful. I will always say, I remember when you came up with this idea in the Economic Development Commission, and to see it come to fruition, every year, it just grows, and it's just fabulous. So thank you guys so much for being a part of this and supporting the city in this way.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All right, we have reached public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Do we have, did anybody sign up, or are we just inviting people to come up?
We're just inviting people to come up, Mayor. I just felt like I didn't-
I just felt like I didn't have disinfectant for the pins or anything like that, so we're going to call them up.
If you would like to make a comment, come on in.
Good evening, my name is Donna Reagan. It's nice to see you all this evening, although you probably won't say the same when I finish. How many of you were born here? I was born in this town. My grandparents were born here. My great-grandparents emigrated here. This is not the place I was raised in. This city is no longer what it was, not by a long shot. My grandfather's last working position here, his name was Glenn Reagan. He was a deputy sheriff here. He was also a detective. My father served in the Coast Guard, based here originally, and then elsewhere as well. I grew up in the house that my great-grandparents built. Right up the road, 1911 G Street, that's the house I grew up in. I've lived in this town most of my life. I've only left here for just a few years. And when I came back, it was nothing like home. The streets are filthy. It's ugly. When you come into town and you see people camping on the side of the freeway, on both ends of town, that's what our tourists see. People are afraid to walk in Old Town. They're terrified, and they're terrified to stand up and say anything about it. This is what I hear from my community members. Our industry slain by environmental protection abuse, safety destroyed by the gentle slapping of hands, outright refusal to do what is not only right, but fair to our community as a whole. I'm sick, I'm sick of watching our citizens fail to enforce their rights to proper health and wellness. I'm certain I'm not alone in this. And I'm speaking here because I need to say, this is enough. More than enough. Yes, I get it. Being 21 years clean, addiction is a problem. A huge problem, and it needs to be addressed. However, what's been allowed as a possible solution does not work without the proper organizational oversight and implementation of appropriate procedures and laws in place to procure the desired result. In turn, it has led to outright chaos, destruction of our community as a whole. And I stand here demanding accountability from all of our public servants. I am so fed up. We need to see the checks and balances. We need to make sure that our streets are safe. My mother should be able to walk out to the street from her door and not feel threatened. And so should yours.
Good evening, dear citizens, City Council. I actually didn't plan on speaking. I just wanted to be here in support of other citizens that are truly upset and that finally come forward and address the most pressing issues of our community. As a judge found, right, the most pressing issues in our community, which are the crime, the needle litter, the feces on the streets, the homeless crisis in and by itself. I just reopened business in Old Town. I saved a year and a half to every penny in working in frickin' Bend, Oregon, to come back and to reopen my business here. I've seen four private parts, unsolicited, by homeless people since I opened my shop. Three women, one exposing herself because she felt like it, and two relieving themselves, and a man from behind whose buttock and testicles I had to see early in the morning. And that is what we see. And if somebody's smiling behind their mask, you know, you should be ashamed of yourself. This is a tragedy for all participants. It's not funny that a woman exposes herself on Third Street. It's not funny that people urinate and defecate and throw their stinking needles everywhere. And we still haven't solved that problem. And now, the needles are being handed out at the bay, underneath the bridge, underneath the Moore Bridge. What do you think the junkies will do? They flip them like cigarette butts right into the bay. The so-called environmentalists, you should be up in arms. You should be up in arms over this unsolved environmental catastrophe called needle litter. We always hear recycling, BPA-free, 80% of plastic goods are being collected or not. What is with the needles? Where is the transparency, accountability, and responsibility that I and others have been demanding for years? It's spelled TAR, transparency, accountability, and responsibility. The only TAR we need in this town. And I come back a year and a half later. I had my business in Old Town for seven years. It's exponentially worse. It's nightmarish. I grew up in Berlin, three and a half million people city. I've seen a lot in my life. This is unacceptable. There is not a single city in Germany of this size, 28,000 people, give or take, that is dealing with the issues that we are dealing with. If you think tourists would still want to come here, you can drive down every road, and you look into the streets, and there they are shooting up, defecating, exposing themselves. You really think you want to stop here? You see the nice murals, you go to Old Town. The only few remaining tourists I see, they are either plainly disgusted at this town and how it's mismanaged, or they have fear in their eyes. Great way to live, great way to treat your citizens. And all the kumbaya and all the lipstick on the pig will not change that this town is severely mismanaged. And then, to see, oh, the city assumes more power versus grabbing Main Street Eureka and Humboldt made and want to expand their power while proving to be incompetent in leading and protecting this city is truly shameful. And those that get elected via voter harvesting, you should all resign.
Thank you, Cornelius. Any other public comment?
Hi there, I'm Chuck Elsworth. I live in the Bridge District. And this is some of our Neighborhood Watch operation. And we just wanted to say thanks to the Police Department for the great response that we've been getting in the Bridge District when we have a problem. It's usually three minutes. That's a hell of a good response time. And we're going to have a Neighborhood Watch meeting. And Scott Bauer, you are our council representative. And we really want you to show up on the 17th of September.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. We don't have a spot picked out yet, but it's either going to be probably at Stewart Telecommunications, or it's going to be at the Methadone Center down on First Street. They hosted us one time also, so. And this invitation is extended to all of you. Katie, come on. The Bridge District is a little-known, kind of a tucked-away zone in our community. And most people don't know it, but it's east of R and north of Fourth. And when Kim was representing our ward, she was kind enough to show up two or three times, so thank you. And that's what I got to say. Denise, next.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, we do welcome you. And we also, in response to the EPD, we want to spend a moment to thank Sergeant LaFrance and Suzie Osley for keeping everybody in communication with EPD. The invitation also goes to our Chief Watson to please come. We have some issues that we would like to talk to you about. And just like Mr. Lowenstein says, we would like to talk to you about what is happening under the bridge. Some of it, I think, is cool, some of it, we do not. And we also need your help with code enforcement to talk about the China Buffet, the Gomse, and what is happening in the building next to the Asian Sub. We have a real issue there. So please, and we will stick to those topics for you and make the best use of your time, sir.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that it's really important for neighbors to have an active Neighborhood Watch. Thank God, we have Denise, who's really active. And our group is really active, and we do get out and walk around. And we have a Facebook group. But we do need our city people to be with us and to come and to get to know us and to be in our neighborhood and to see what's going on. We've had that in the past. And we do need you, Scott, to get to know us and to find out what's happening in our neighborhood. We're really grateful for the police who are very responsive. We can't, they can't do everything, but they do come. They respond very quickly, and we have to have that. We know that we have to be responsible. We do need their help, but we need a partnership with our city officials too.
All right, thank you guys for coming down.
Thanks for putting up here to see you.
Okay, we are going to move on to, oh wait, do we have another? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm speaking tonight on the current state of our downtown and Old Town business districts. Taking a walk the other day was really enlightening. Along my walk, I find broken windows, boarded-up windows with plywood, metal accordion gates to keep out the transients, decaying food left by the transients, excrement, needle litter, dirty streets, clocks that don't work in Old Town, vacant retail spaces, garbage left everywhere by the transients, and transients near every street corner. Is this what we want the tourists and customers to see in our business districts? I don't understand why our city leaders do not care about the heart and soul of Eureka, our business district. Our once vital and flourishing downtown and Old Town looks like what you see in San Francisco, Los Angeles, Portland, and Seattle. Most of our surrounding communities do not look like Eureka. Traveling this summer to other communities throughout California, I did not see decaying business communities like Eureka. Walking on Fifth Street between F and G Street, I see a marijuana dispensary, a pizza parlor, a vacated Red Cross pharmacy, a vacated former Club West, a vacated jewelry store, a vacated former restaurant, and a vacated former florist shop. Fifth and F Street, in appraisal terminology, which is what I am, is the 100% corner of the business district. I have fought saying this for a long time because I love my city, but it has turned into a pit. I guarantee it is nothing that our leaders should be proud of. Our business people are in need of help financially and emotionally. They are barely hanging on. The transients have been allowed to infiltrate our two business districts and are dangerous. Other communities have not let this happen to them. Our police have their hands tied in many cases due to Prop 47 and 57. However, the mayor and council can pass municipal codes, directives, and policies that would help the community out. We no longer feel safe in our own hometown. Our town is dying. Local social media reflects this daily on how disgusting Eureka has become. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else? Okay, oh, come on in. Come on, all the way.
Regarding the camping ordinance, which will be an agenda item later, correct?
Yes.
Cool, I'll save my public comment for then, if that's all right.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
All right, so no other public comment. Then I will move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. I haven't heard of anything. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Right, do I have motion, Councilmember Royal?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Everybody vote.
Councilmember Castellano, can you cast your vote by voice? Councilmember Castellano, can you cast your voice or your vote?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. So we will move on now to Item C1, Cook and Callison Alley Vacation. Is that going to be?
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Seaman, I'm Kaitlin Castellano, senior planner in the Development Services Planning. Tonight, I present to you for your consideration, the Cook and Callison Alley Vacation. Here's a bird's-eye view of where the proposed alley vacation is located in context of the city limits. Here we are zooming in. The subject alley is generally south of Harris Street and west of Sequoia Park. Moving in even closer, the proposed portion of the alley to be vacated is located in the southernmost portion of the alley between L Street to the west and M Street to the east, which begins at Bryant Street to the north and ends north of Manzanita to the south. The alley is approximately 550 feet in length and does not accommodate through traffic because at its southern end, where the proposed vacation is located, Manzanita Avenue was vacated in 2003. And the exact location between the, excuse me, the exact location is between two single-family residential properties known as 113 Manzanita and 3484 M Street. The site is in the residential low zoning district, and it has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential. Finally, zooming in even closer, the proposed portion of alley is 20 by 60 feet, excuse me, and it's approximately 120 square feet in size. So, per the applicant, they have used the alley to access their property continually for a period of five or more years and desire to continue to do so even though the alley directly behind their property has been impassable for over five years. As a result, the project must be processed as a general vacation. Street and Highway Code Section 8300 at sequence, known as the Public Streets, Highways, and Service Easements Vacation Law, grants authority to City Council to vacate streets, and it describes the required processes to vacate. Streets and Highway Code Section 8313 Subsection B requires California Government Code Section 65402 be followed, which requires the Planning Commission report to the City Council on the conformity of the vacation with the general plan. Lastly, City Policy 4.02 describes the city's procedures for street vacations consistent with state law. Briefly, a vacation again means abandonment or termination of public street. And a street can be a highway road, street alley, trail, or public easement. Per the city manager, this portion of alley is not paved and has no utilities, and it is not a through alley due to the adjoining Paper Street being vacated in 2003. Therefore, a finding can be made that the alley is unnecessary for present or prospective use. Furthermore, if this portion of alley is vacated, half will revert back to each adjoining parcel. As required by Streets and Highway Code Section 8313, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 12th and adopted a resolution finding the proposed vacation did not conflict with the general plan. The site has a low-density residential land use designation, which is for single-family residences and is intended to be suburban. The alley vacation will enlarge the back rear portions of both parcels. Furthermore, the Planning Commission recommended conditions of approval. First, the local tribal historic preservation officers, known as TIPOs, requested the project be conditioned with the city's inadvertent discovery, archaeological discovery protocol for cultural or historical artifacts in the event of any ground-disturbing activities would occur in the vacated area. Additionally, as a result from a quest from a neighbor, the commission recommended the applicant be required to install a fence or gate in the alley as a barrier instead of a cable, as previously used, at the north end of the portion of the alley being vacated to decrease the potential for accidents and the fence or gate not be attached to the adjoining neighbor's private property. Briefly, in this image here is the street view of the alley. There's the dead end of the alley. That's a detached accessory structure at the very end. Here's the adjoining neighbors to the north and where the concerned neighbor was. And here is where the proposed barrier will go. In conclusion, the proposed alley vacation is consistent with the general plan and is unnecessary for present or prospective public use. Therefore, staff recommends the council, one, receive the Planning Commission's recommendation to vacate, declare council's intention to order the vacation by adopting a resolution of intention. Three, direct the city clerk to publish the resolution of intention and direct Public Works Engineering to post the alley to be vacated in accordance with state law. And four, set a public hearing before the City Council for September 7th in order to... in order to order the vacation. Here's a suggested motion, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Councilmember Royal?
Could you just clarify a little bit more about where the fencing will go? I'm thinking about that comment that you made about making sure that people don't accidentally drive down it and then realize, will there also be signage at the street?
Yes, there is signage there already, but I did speak with our streets project manager, and he said that it does qualify for additional signage. So right now it says no outlet, and we're going to put another sign that says dead end.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this item here? All right, I'll bring it back for comments or a motion. Councilmember Bagal?
So I'll make a motion. I move the city council adopt a resolution declaring its intention to order the vacation, directing the city clerk to publish the resolution of intention, and directing Public Works Engineering to post the alley to be vacated in accordance with state law, and to set a public hearing before the city council for September 7th, 2021, to order the vacation of the southern 60-foot wide portion of a City of Eureka alley located between Allen M Streets and Manzanita Avenue and Bryant Streets adjacent to APN 001-212-023 and 011-212-018, project number SV210001.
One second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, further discussion on this item? If not, I'm assuming, does Councilmember Castellano, is she okay? We can start voting. I just want to make sure to have a comment. Councilmember, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I do not have any questions at this time.
All right, then let's vote. Councilmember Castellano, can you cast your vote verbally?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item C2, Bill Number 1003, Camping Ordinance Amendment. Is that going to be Mr. City Attorney Bob Black?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a pretty straightforward amendment. It was in part caused by an error bringing forward the earlier comprehensive ordinance in which the version presented was like the next to the last version and did not contain a prohibition on camping in city parks. It didn't have too much practical effect because all after-hours nighttime use of city parks in all city parks is already prohibited. So this doesn't have a big substantive effect. Additionally, we would be adding a clause to the new version of the camping ordinance that would provide for a, that any portion of that ordinance that is successfully challenged or any enforcement of that ordinance that is successfully challenged can be split off from the remainder of the ordinance, and the remainder of the ordinance would remain valid. It's a fairly standard clause, but in this particular instance, I felt it would be very beneficial to this ordinance because there is certainly the possibility it may be challenged. So that's the entire substance of what's before you today. These, this new language would be added into Section 93.02 as it was amended by you this spring. Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions? For City Attorney Black, I don't see any. I'm going to open it up to public comment on this item.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for the confusion earlier. Just want to make sure I was in the right spot. So yeah, my name's Calder Johnson. I'm the North Coast, the managing artistic director of the North Coast Repertory Theater down on Third Street. You know, actually saw the nice picture of it earlier. I wanted to say that we've heard earlier, obviously, people talk about things like the defecation, you know, the urination, too, we can add that. I've had to deal with a lot of these things, particularly over the last year, as an actual business owner there, in addition to everything else that's been happening with COVID, which has been, well, it's been an extremely challenging year. So I want to say that, preface that by saying, I understand how deep the problem is. Having said all of that, I am still opposed to this ordinance. I do not think it is a good idea. And I want to say that also, understanding that I know everyone is, we're all trying our best to navigate an extremely complex, delicate, and very difficult and heart-wrenching situation for everyone, for business owners, for the homeless, for the city. That having been said, I am concerned that it is a sort of cart before the horse issue we are experiencing here, where we are, even if it is with a delicate touch, criminalizing homelessness without providing really truly meaningful solutions first. I've had the opportunity to work with some local organizations like Cooperation Humboldt, Miles, I know you've been part of that conversation, and I appreciate that very much. And I'm worried because I know for a lot of us in the community, I hear things like, for example, people come to me and say, well, you should just put up some barricades at your business. That would solve it. I'm like, well, I mean, would solve it for me, me personally, but it doesn't solve the issue. It doesn't solve the issue for the people who are trying to shelter themselves there. Or people that then come to me and say like, oh, well, do you know they're planning on building, planning on building affordable housing in that parking lot right next to you? You should tell them not to do that. And I'm like, well, hold on a second. So you want me to get the homeless out of here and just completely out of here, out of sight, out of mind? NIMBYism is a very dangerous thing. People say, well, not in my backyard. It's like, yes, yes, in my backyard. We're a community after all. That's what defines us as a community. So that's what I would like to say, that I know that this will still likely pass. And I understand, again, all of the reasons for that. But I ask all of you, please, to be ever vigilant looking towards how we truly solve this problem for our entire community in the long run in the best way possible. And I also want to thank all of you for your service, too, particularly now since I know, well, things aren't easy, and they're still not easy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this? All right, I'll bring it back to council for comments, discussion, and/or a motion. Anybody? Councilmember Bauer? Oh, Councilmember Royal?
I got so excited that you were going to weigh in. Well, I really appreciate those comments from our speaker. And I am of the same mind in many ways. And I also, when we first debated the whole ordinance and the real meat of it, there was, it just felt like a challenging compromise that didn't necessarily, you know, I know it's not addressing the root issue, but it's balancing some of the outcry that we hear from various community members and from our own, some of our own city departments about not having enough tools to address some real ongoing problems with the fact that we need to be doing more to address the overwhelming need for housing and services in our community. And I think those are, to some degree, different things, but I understand the concerns about this ordinance. I do think if we're going to have this ordinance at all, we need to have it say that, you know, say what it's supposed to say, and this is really a cleanup that is proposed. So, you know, I don't want to keep other people from saying what they need to say, but I do just want to say that I support it, and in fact, I'll make the motion to approve this ordinance as written.
So there is recommended language on the first page of the staff report?
Oh, do I need to read it? I can't just say so moved.
Oh, well.
Actually, on an ordinance, we do have to read it into the record.
Okay, I'm not trying to be lazy.
Could have been staff recommendations.
I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1001 Tax CS, an ordinance of the City of Eureka amending Section 93.02 as amended by ordinance Number 913 Tax CS of Title IX, Chapter 93, Parks and Recreation.
One second.
Oh, it's an introduction only. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, or everybody's voting already? Ready to vote?
I have a little discussion.
Oh, thank you, Natalie.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And thank you, everyone, for tolerating my phone call-in while I'm out of town visiting family. Just want to say, you know, I really appreciate staff's time on this, and of course, the diligence towards, you know, making our ordinances and resolutions better is always appreciated. As before, when this came before council, I am in opposition to this in the sense that, as Mr. Johnson spoke to, but as well as what I voiced before, that I do think that anything like this needs to be contextualized within a larger plan, which, you know, we still haven't come forward with yet. And, you know, I don't see this as solving the issues that people come to me with and that, you know, where do people poop and where does that go? And if anything, I just see this as potentially pushing that into more ecologically fragile areas. You know, it only, it doesn't, basically, you know, the challenge, of course, is that it doesn't address the issues that we are trying to address. You know, and with that being said, I definitely appreciate staff's work on this and that this is a challenging issue, and I appreciate, you know, the work of CSAD and things, and some of the things that people speak to, especially in terms of people sleeping in doorways and things like that. We do have existing law about that that could be implemented. So that's my statement for tonight, and thank you all.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion is over, so let's vote. Councilmember Castellano?
No.
Or yes vote? Councilmember Castellano, do you think so? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now ready to move on to item E, City Manager Reports.
Well, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I just have a couple of things I'd like to discuss. First, the quicker of the two is kind of bringing back a meeting that was held in the past with two councilmembers, as well as a couple of board members from the Chamber of Commerce. The executive director of the Chamber of Commerce has expressed an interest in bringing that back, and I just wanted to solicit any interest in being a member to meet. I think the meetings would happen every other month, and we would come up with a date for that. So if any councilmembers are interested in participating in that, it would be just to receive updates about what the chamber is doing and kind of any sort of partnerships that we could have with them, and also address any concerns from some of their members as well.
I'd be happy to volunteer.
Excellent. Anybody else want to be part of that two by two?
I'd be delighted.
All right, Councilmember Mulcher and Councilmember Royal?
Perfect. I will have Administrative Assistant Selena come and reach out to you guys and figure out a good date for that going forward. And then the next topic is going to be with City Attorney Black and Chief Watson. They want to discuss some outstanding citations and bench warrants that resulted from our previous camping ordinance, and I think this will be well received. So, City Attorney Black?
There was a period of time when the city was fairly aggressive about enforcing the old camping ordinance. And the very terms of that old camping ordinance, as we all know, were kind of torpedoed by the evolving case law in the area of people camping on public property. Over the course of time, from going back as far as 12, I'm sorry, going back as far as 2011, there were bench warrants issued by the court in Humboldt County in cases, foreign cases brought by the City Attorney's Office to enforce the Eureka Municipal Code. Very frequently, people who were camping also turned out to be transient people. And so they were cited, and a case was filed, but then they failed to appear, and a bench warrant was issued. And the data that you have in front of you is almost entirely, if not entirely, based on outstanding bench warrants for defendants in Eureka Municipal Code cases, defendants who did not appear. And bail was set by the court that issued the bench warrant anywhere from $500 to $10,000. The vast majority of bail was set at $5,000. My office took a look at the fact that the underlying ordinance was eventually held unconstitutional, and as you know, we replaced it. And so Christine and my office began searching the court records to find the instances of these outstanding bench warrants and to prepare petitions to be signed by me to request the court to dismiss these cases. So what you have are situations where a fairly large number of people have these bench warrants following them around and making it more difficult for them to reintegrate into society or to essentially pull up their lives, get housing, get credit, get driver's licenses, et cetera. So we have eventually successfully obtained the dismissal of 164 cases. And the motivation behind that, I think, comes from the philosophy of the Eureka PD. And I'd like to ask Chief Watson to perhaps address that for us.
Thank you, Attorney Black, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Attorney Black actually covered the topic pretty well, but I'll just bring you back in history a little bit. We had a decided shift in our philosophy towards addressing the issue of homelessness and the quality of life issues, and some of, we'll call them minor crimes, associated with many of those who are homeless in our community. And that shift occurred around 2017. Around that time or prior to that time, I think we had as many as 1,200 or so EMC citations in one particular year, and that had steadily increased over a couple of year periods before that. And these were cases filed with the then-city attorney and was based on our existing ordinances. And I certainly believe that the vast majority, if not all of them, complied with our ordinance. But as Attorney Black has since mentioned, case law is evolving. And the most powerful, the most recent case that we have is Martin versus Boise that really took a different look at homelessness and enforcement of camping ordinances. So around 2017, we already, the city and the Eureka Police Department, started to shift our philosophy, realizing, hey, we're using the tool we had available and trying to make a difference to make our community more safe and more livable and address quality of life issues because we all know that we have a real problem. But how much were we really accomplishing through that? Backlogging, you know, the criminal justice system and the City Attorney's Office with cases that need to be prosecuted, with people that have been cited frequently, failing to appear sometimes multiple times, and continuing to pile up fines and really not getting at the underlying causal factors, not getting upstream of the problem. And so while I'm here to tell you that if we want a safe and livable city and we want to address quality of life issues... to address quality of life issues and we want the city to be available to all of our citizens, we do have to have tools like the ordinance. I think it's a very thoughtful ordinance that you adopted that fixes our camping ordinance and gives us some tools to maintain order in a balanced way that complies with the court's decision and is much more compassionate. And so that is a valuable tool, and I want to emphasize that. But we've really shifted to outreach and relationship building and services as our preferred option, voluntary compliance when possible, and using enforcement specific to the homeless in particular and things like camping, only when really necessary. In fact, I don't think we've issued an actual citation yet under the new ordinance, which has been in effect for a few months. I don't want you to take that to mean it's worthless, why do we have it? But because it gives us the authority, if we have to, to address certain problems. I got a long email today that all of you were included in with a very frustrated resident in Old Town that shows you why we need to have that tool. But as you know, and as I felt, and I think we felt, that you expected, we don't want that tool abused or overused either. We want it to be thoughtfully implemented. And so 164 of these cases between 2011 and 2017, with the tremendous work from the City Attorney's Office, they spent a lot of time on this, have been dismissed, as he indicated. It's kind of a fresh start for all of those that were involved. And we were talking about an amnesty program exactly like this some time back, and really this is what this is. It's a kind of a resetting there, especially under the old ordinances. As Attorney Black had mentioned, you know, these kind of outstanding warrants and in some cases very hefty fines can actually serve as a barrier over time for the homeless to get a job or housing. And as we know, most of them can't pay the fines anyways. And so that's one of the real intents behind this program and one of the benefits of it. Also, these cases that we're talking about that occurred four to 10 years ago are pre-CSET and pre-Uplift, like we talked about. We've taken a new tact where we're trying to get upstream again, while at the same time being mindful that we have citizens, visitors, residents, business owners that are being impacted every day with these issues. And so we have to be able to give them some relief as well. So that, you know, those are kind of the main points or the main takeaways behind how we arrived at where we're at today with this. I think I hit most of those. And again, I just want to thank the city attorney, you know, and his office for their work on this. I think this is a good thing. I think it's the right thing to do, weighing the spirit of the law and the totality of the circumstances, so we can move forward on our new path that we're on. We're still striving to find that balance between when enforcement's necessary to gain compliance, but really preferring voluntary compliance and trying to get upstream through services. And outreach and uplift is a prime example, as well as the work of CSET.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Councilmember Arroyo, then Councilmember Moulton? Did you guys raise your hands over here? This is Councilmember Bauer.
Can you explain how the bench warrants work? Maybe you said that at the beginning, but I missed it. So these are just outstanding fines, but is there an actual warrant out for that person's arrest?
Yes, it's my understanding, every one of these cases, 164 cases here, and you had indicated earlier, I think there was only five cases during this period we didn't touch because they were filed by the district attorney's office. So really, that's, you know, leave those alone for now. But they all represent warrants, bench warrants, for these individuals for, often for their failure to appear. And those fines are prescribed by the court.
But is there a reason why some of them are so high? Is it sort of arbitrary or is it based on, what is the court based that on?
I believe it's, in many cases, the consequences of failure to appear. And sometimes those can even stack as they repeatedly do that. The original fines and citations, I think for a misdemeanor in the state of California, it's a fine up to $1,000 typically. And our ordinance also prescribes fines.
Sure, sure. Okay. I just wanted to understand a little bit more about how those function outside of these specific instances.
So what happens is the, you're cited for violating a specific provision of the EMC. The failure to appear is actually a separate offense, and it's an offense against the court because you promised to appear before the court and now you're not there. So the court, because of your promise to appear, the court has jurisdiction over you. The court expected you to be there, sometimes has ordered you to be there, and you decide not to show up. So the court is issuing a warrant, bring that person before the court. And since that usually can't happen instantly, you are going to be assessed. We're setting bail at 5,000 was the most common. So either you spend time in jail waiting for your court appearance or you have to come up with that amount for bail or whatever the, you know, 10% of that amount. So maybe the chief, since you've been in the field, can explain what happens if you are identifying somebody in the field and they have a warrant outstanding.
Yes. So the warrants either can indicate if it's a do not cite warrant, mandatory appearance, or may cite and release. Many of them are cite and release, so the officer has discretion. They can either make a custodial arrest and sometimes technically the warrant orders them to per a judge's direction, or they can issue them essentially a new citation with a new court date that they have to appeal. Unfortunately, the vicious cycle often starts all over again because they don't appear. They're almost better off in some cases. Well, not, I mean, I was going to say, the arrest to trigger things and then they get released with a new court date and don't appear again, so that's actually not true. Additionally, things have changed a lot, especially during the COVID period, but even prior to that with the impacts of AB 109 that have crowded our local jails with offenders that used to formerly be in the prison system. So less room for these lower level crimes. And so a lot of times the jail wouldn't even accept them anyways, or they'd only go in, get cleared in the intake room and be given a court date from the sheriff's office essentially and put back out on the street. So that's kind of the history behind that. In some cases, officers have discretion, they may not even address the warrant at this point, almost a feeling like it's not worth the time right now. So these warrants sit out there and linger as well. The benefit, I guess, would be that they're not maybe compiling new failures appear unless they get a new offense, but again, it's imperfect system. It is a tool, if you have an individual causing other problems, like you go to a disturbance in Old Town, let's say, and the individual has an outstanding warrant, maybe you don't have another crime at that level that you can arrest them for or cite them for, or maybe this is just a more expeditious way to temporarily solve a problem. You could use the warrant to remove that person, take them into custody, and whether you cite and release them elsewhere or actually go through the process of taking them to the jail where they're going to be released. So let's say someone is causing a major disturbance outside of business, refuses to cooperate, leaves, is impacting the business, frightening people, and we really feel we have an obligation that we have to do something, we can't just drive away.
All right. Councilmember Moulton?
I'm just curious, what efforts are being made to let these folks know that their warrants have been released? Is there some attempt to, I'm not saying largely transient population, but is there some attempt being made to find or contact these people?
Go ahead.
Is that possible?
Well, from the city attorney's office point of view, the answer is no. I could and I will explore the possibilities of that, but mostly the only thing we have for these individuals is an old manila file with the original citation and various other court history in it. A lot of times the mailing address for the folks is general delivery, Eureka, California. And if they've moved on, we really have no idea what city they're in. So I don't think it's going to be feasible, but we have all the files stacked up, so we can start going through to see if any of them could be notified.
In fact, people are not getting a driver's license or not attempting to find employment because they believe this warrant is out there. It seems to me like it'd be worth making some kind of attempt to let them know.
That would be. I can also relate a personal experience. I was in the sheriff's office in Dale Nord County getting a live scan because I was going to be, I needed that to serve on the local CASA board. And in the room with me, there were at least 10 people who were job applicants at Walmart. And they were, their employer sent them down to get, I mean, their prospective employer sent them to get a live scan. So this is the kind of thing that would show up if you were taking your live scan results in for a job interview, probably devastating.
And then it, yeah, the warrant wouldn't show up, as you said, and they realize at that point that they no longer had one. Like Attorney Black said, it would be very difficult because you can't mail notices to everyone, and this is 160 something people you'd have to try to track down individually. So I don't know if perhaps considering some kind of artfully crafted press release, you know, between 11 and 2011, 2017, 164 dismissed cases that may prompt some to ask, or if it's even possible to have a number to see if their name's on the list. I just, we can't just post names, you know, publicly, but maybe that would be enough to prompt some to realize, you know, perhaps my case is dismissed.
And the one, I'd say the one good thing that Mayor Seaman brought up in our agenda review was, you know, when people are out of the area and this shows up, you know, let's say in Texas, and they're saying you have this warrant all the way back in Humboldt County, and they may have roots over there, or they may have a drug addiction or something that triggers them when they come in here, they won't have to come back here and address that legal issue that they established here in Humboldt County. And I would hope that if this list was given to EPD staff, there may be some people that are still here locally and that if there's personal contact with CSET, there's some other officers that they can notify them that this has been waived.
We could certainly give the list to CSET, and as they recognize people, they can inform them. It doesn't mean they may not have other warrants that are more recent, but at least they'll know that certain cases are dismissed.
All right. Councilmember Bauer?
I just want to say, I appreciate the idea of a fresh start for people, you know, that we've given them another shot. And I hope, I hope it helps, you know. That said, too, you know, we have laws and I hope, you know, if we, if we do reach out to these people that, you know, it's like, you got another shot, you know, let's try and do the right thing. And CSET does their best to do great outreach, you know. I really appreciate those guys, and I know they try and get people going in the right direction, and this is a great start. So thank you for working on this, both of you.
Councilmember Bergel?
Just an additional suggestion on that note. I don't know if it's legal to give a list to Uplift, but Uplift also does a lot of outreach and some free meal. And my guess is that over that period of time, that there are going to be a few at least that are gone, that have died or that type of thing. And so it'd be nice to be able to, like, check people off as far as who we've reached and who we haven't reached and who's, you know. Because I too, I think it's really important for people to know that, I mean, you might hit them just right at the right time, you know, and they might just, that might be the thing that just turns their life around. So I'm all about looking for any way that we can do that, any opportunity.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you guys very much for that, and we'll look forward to finding some of them.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Castellano, did you have anything to add to that?
No, but thank you to everyone who worked on that.
Since we've got you, do you want to go ahead and start with the reports? We'll let Councilmember Castellano go first.
Sure. I'll keep it short since I'm on the phone. The poet laureate panel did meet, so I helped convene that over the, in the past week. So soon we will have a new poet laureate, and it was very exciting, and our youth poet laureates and current poet laureate participated. So thanks to everyone who's part of that panel. And I've been out of town, but there are a couple of things in the work, and I'll announce them once they're planned. I've been working with Robin Prosker to do another Wabash cleanup, and I've been working with some folks to do a, some sort of outdoor kind of town type of meeting. Of course, you know, definitely watching the signs of the pandemic and, you know, wanting to make sure that everything's as safe as possible. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and start down here with Councilmember Bergel.
I have a list. I rarely do, but today I have a, it's not too short. So with Councilmember Moulton, I got to go and Director Gerving, we got to go around to the different plants, the wastewater treatment plant and the low tank. And it was really interesting. I did not know that the city of Eureka people use two and a half to three million gallons of water per day. That is a lot of water. And we got to go into the low tank and just look inside, which, you know, I've walked by that thing since I was a little kid. And so it was just kind of interesting to see what was going on inside of there. The wastewater treatment plant was really simple and it was very interesting, and it was very stinky. I just have to tell you, that was, that was rough. But it was really, it was really interesting to learn and, because I had no idea. And I've been on council quite a while now, and that has been one of the things that I have never done, and so I'm grateful that I have done that. Secondly, speaking of CSET, I did go out on my ride along, which I feel like the summertime is when I usually go on all my ride alongs. I feel like it's super important to see what people are doing in our community, like with wastewater, which I've only done once, but the fire department, the police department, different groups. And I just want to share a quick story because it was phenomenal, the way that these guys work. So I was out with Officer Swanson, and we were out walking on P'chari Trail, and he sensed, or I don't know, maybe his spider senses were tingling, but there was a guy camping kind of just right off the trail. And so we walked back there to check in with them, and this guy, you know, there was like, it was kind of disgusting, just to be frank. I mean, there was like diarrhea and just icky stuff. But Officer Swanson went up there and identified himself. The guy came out and Officer Swanson started to talk to him about what services were available in our community and, you know, had he heard of this and this. And the guy really was so, well, he, somebody else was talking to him and that person wasn't there. Officer Swanson recognized that and, you know, just kept on kind of just trying to engage with them. Well, what ended up happening, this was so beautiful, you guys. So what ended up happening is Officer Swanson said, you know, because of the region that you're in, this isn't a non-camping zone, but, but if you pack up your tent and meet me in the parking lot at 3:00, I'll take you over and get you some, we'll go over to mental health and we'll, we'll figure some stuff out for you. So, you know, that was two hours later, right? So is the guy going to show up? Well, yes, he did. He was packed up in the parking lot, and I talked to Officer Swanson later. He picked him up, he took him over to mental health to get some services. The next day, he was down at Free Meal, having a meal. He's staying at the mission now. And, you know, he's working with mental health. He had a nice, great, long talk with the social worker, Tom Nash, who was fabulous. And, you know, this is what our team is doing. It was just, it was really heartwarming for me to see because, you know, oftentimes I think as, as community members, we might look at that and go, holy man, that's too scary to even deal with, you know? And Officer Swanson did a fabulous job. Now, later in that day, I went out with Officer LaFrance, and this just shows you the opposite of what happens, and not that Officer LaFrance didn't anything, but we went up to a fellow who was in Maticat Plaza, and he was ripping and roaring, and he had his music up loud and he was just, you know, nuts, acting nuts, I shouldn't say nuts, acting nuts. And Officer LaFrance went up to him and just had this, like, total calm. I mean, I was like, oh my God, seriously? But he had this totally calm conversation with him, and the guy was like right in LaFrance's face, just cussing him out. And LaFrance was just totally like together, you know? And that ended well as well. The guy picked up some of his stuff and carried on. But I just, I just want to say those two things because I so appreciate the way that these folks, that our teams interact with people. with people that, you know, we heard tonight, they're so scary. And I'm just so appreciative that our police department, CSET team, that they do treat people like human beings. That they do, um, they do interact in a positive way. And I just, and today when I went down to Free Meal, because it's Mary Price's birthday, uh, the guy, the guy that Ryan Swanson had, he was at Free Meal. So I was like, hey, how's it going? It was just, it was a great thing to have those experiences. And I just, I, I can't say enough how much I appreciate the team and Uplift and all that we're doing to lift up our community. Because, you know, a, a healthy, in my mind, a healthy community lifts each other up. We don't sit and complain and, and, um, belittle people. I don't think that's helpful in any way. So there's that. And then, um, let's see, uh, just so you know, uh, Humboldt Bay Fire just recently sent some men over to the Dixie Fire. So please send them good energy. There's a lot of, that's a dangerous situation. Um, went to get out play day. I just have to say that I took that, see, I do have a long one. I'm so sorry. But it's just so, I'm just so excited about these things. I took the tour of Old Town. I'd, I'd never done that before, like since the third grade. And it was so interesting listening to the architecture and some of the things. And did you know that we had a business college at the Irish Shop? Back in the, like a thousand, not a thousand, but a long, long time ago. And I don't know, it was just really cool to like, and Jack London fought in the Oberon, really? I mean, that was just really cool. So, um, zucchini for the zoo is the fourteenth. And they're looking for bamboo to feed the red pandas. So if you've got any of that. And then lastly, and not most importantly, but pretty important, is where's the camera? There it is. No, there it is. The Humboldt Bay Marathon is happening this Sat- Sunday. Uh, on the waterfront trail, it's going to be, uh, uh, two loops up and back, starting at Madica Plaza. I'll be walking. I'm not running this year, the half marathon, but come out and join us. It's always a fun time. Cheer on the runners. I mean, these guys really work hard. I didn't train, but these guys really work hard and they do an amazing job. And, um, you know, we can always use community support. So I hope that, that there's still time to sign up if you're wanting to run. And if you haven't trained me either, so, you know, join me. And I think that, that, yeah, I think that covers it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Oh, I, I, uh, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I was on family vacation. Um, but before that, I, representing the city, I attended the one of the longest names for, uh, organization, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. So we're talking about wind power, big long meeting. Um, you know, Congressman Huffman's very active in this. And, um, it's the future for Humboldt. We're gonna have wind power. Um, it, the process is moving forward. Uh, comments are due September thirteenth. So on the environmental assessment. So there's a whole process called the call where they basically reach out and say, anybody want this area to, to go, put wind energy down? They have to do an environmental assessment. This is all gonna be very fast. But, um, you know, the future for Humboldt County is, is wind energy. And, and there'll be a lot more meetings and I'll report back, but this is a really important component of how we're gonna get through the fires, the endless fires, you know, the droughts, we gotta, we gotta switch over. It's just a fact of life. Um, I also went out to get out and play and went to Sequoia Park for the ribbon cutting. And I just wanna tell the public, you know, get out there and enjoy that park. Um, it's, it's an amazing thing that, that kids were having a great time, tons of people there. And, uh, thanks to staff for, for really working hard to make that happen. And I look forward to seeing phase, what, phase two or three. And I know there's a lot of money to raise, but hopefully we can, we can get it done, you know? Um, then let's see here. Uh, I, I also wanna shout out to, um, Officer Swanson, LaFrance, LaFrance and Ross. For, uh, I went out with them, met some folks living, um, along the slough. And they're just, they're, they're unbelievable, how they, how they interact with, you know, community members that are experiencing, you know, mental, you know, mental breakdowns. And, um, they're just professionals. And we could use a lot more, a lot more people like that working for us. And then, you know, I do wanna say something about, you know, respect, um, at these meetings. And I, in our, in our packets, everybody gets these. It says, you know, one of the things is to respect one another. And I, I just heard some things today that, you know, spoken to city council and that I find, um, a little tough. And I'm not, I just want people to understand that they can speak with respect just to, to all of us, to each other. Shouting's not necessary. And, um, I hope people will, in the future, come and speak and, and, you know, respect one another. We're all human beings. We all seek happiness. And we do wanna hear about the problems in the city, but it could be done in a more respectful way. That's really it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Royal?
Well, um, I wanted to take this moment to encourage everyone to get regular COVID tests. Um, even if you're vaccinated, um, I personally know multiple people who have, um, tested positive despite being vaccinated. And I don't say that to discourage anyone from getting vaccinated. Please get vaccinated. But also, um, be sure you're continuing to do your best to find out, um, what your status is as far as infection um, or being a carrier and asymptomatic carrier. So, um, I made a commitment to get tested every two weeks. And I just go to the drive-through at Walgreens or there's all kinds of places to get tested. But now you can just go drive through in your car and it takes five minutes. So, and it's pretty painless. So, um, encouraging folks to continue to do that. Um, the rising case counts are alarming. Um, I'm not sure how we will continue to approach our meetings. Um, I know, um, the, the numbers are sobering. So I hope that, um, fellow council members, you'll stay abreast of that. And, um, maybe we'll talk more about what that looks like. I, as much as I like meeting in person, it's starting to feel a little, especially seeing folks today, um, presumably all sitting close to members not of the same household. I thought, you know, this probably isn't, um, isn't the best way to move forward. So certainly something to think about. Um, and I like seeing your faces when we're making decisions. It's hard to know whether it's more effective to see you in person, but be wearing a mask or actually be able to see your facial expressions and be on Zoom. So, um, it's kind of six of one, half dozen of the other. But there's a lot to be said from reading facial expressions when we're talking. And I, and I do like and appreciate that, that aspect of communication. Um, I am also participating in the Humboldt Bay Marathon, uh, but not as a runner. I'm, I'm helping to staff an aid station, giving water and, um, support and direction on the course to runners. Um, I'll be at the foot of Del Norte Street, um, with a couple of wonderful volunteers. But we actually need a couple more volunteers for our aid station early, early Sunday morning, this Sunday. So, um, I was gonna ask you, Kim, but of course you're gonna be there running.
Yeah. And it's seven, the marathon starts at seven, the half starts at eight. I think I forgot to say that. I had so much.
So I'll be there at like, you know, six-ish to noon. Um, so anyway, uh, I'm excited to, it's something I've done almost every year that the marathon has been in existence. The Humboldt Bay Marathon is, um, I am the child of a runner and I am not a runner myself. So I love to cheer on the runners. And, um, we're gonna be there wearing Hawaiian shirts and playing fun music and just making the best of it, trying to make it super festive. But could use one or two more volunteers at that aid station. Um, so yeah, this year is gonna be, there's gonna be at least seventy, seventy plus people running and, um, all on the Eureka Waterfront Trail. So how cool is that, that our Eureka Waterfront Trail is, is the marathon course? So.
Come to Del Norte, Natalie always has the best outfits.
I do. I, yeah. There's jumpsuits involved. Um, flowered jumpsuits. So, and I have extra Hawaiian shirts if, you know, one of y'all wants to join me in. Um, I can supply you. So anyway, um, see y'all there. And, um, beyond that, it's been some, um, I don't wanna say they were boring, but just regular run-of-the-mill meetings that I go to. And, um, I'd like to ensure that we do have one of the county two-by-two meetings, city-county two-by-two meetings. That was on my mind today. And, um, so looking forward to the next one of those. Anyway, I'll pass it on.
Councilmember Molton?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Royal doesn't run. She prefers push-ups.
Yes.
Strength training. Uh, as Councilmember Bergell mentioned, uh, we did a Public Works tour with Director Gerving. Very interesting. I got to see the water system all the way from the point north in North Arcata, where we split off of the county system all the way through, uh, the effluent pond before everything goes out into the bay. I learned a lot about the volume and the quality of our water. I learned that our treatment plant uses something called zoogliel mass, which is algae. And, um, as they put it, bugs that eat our, uh, our leavings rather than a chemical treatment. It's this organic process. And I found that really interesting. Um, we went to the zoo for lunch right there next to the, uh, reservoir. And the zoo was packed. We have just this wonderful little gem, this world-class zoo, just tucked away over there. And people are really starting to appreciate it. I come from a very large cosmopolitan city. And, um, it always makes my heart very happy when I can walk fifty yards and hear three or four different languages. And I appreciated that, getting to walk across the zoo and see so many people from different places. Traveling, of course, is making me very nervous right now, but it was an outdoor venue. And there were a lot of masks, even though, um, it wasn't mandated, or it isn't mandated at that point. So at least people are being conscientious of that. Um, I wanted to thank Director Gerving for, um, such a thorough, uh, introduction to the water system. We barely touched on roads and all of the other great works that Public Works do. And I'd, I'd love to talk more to, to get even more fascinating details about all of that. If anyone is interested in my reflections, um, I find my, I have access in this position. People keep, you know, teaching me about all of these wonderful things. And I want to turn that around to the public and to my constituents. I have a, um, a mailing list and a, a Facebook page where I just do reflections on these experiences just to pass on the, the great and interesting things that I'm learning as part of this office. Um, that's Katie Molton for Ward Two, uh, if you're looking for me. And, um, yeah, coming up next week, I will be painting, repainting my very first professional mural project as part of Eureka Street Art Festival. I, um, Eureka has this, all of Humboldt has this, um, really strong, um, arts community. And it's because the community values public arts. I'm really grateful and honored to be participating in that. It's, it's such a, a welcoming and inviting thing. The artists around here are just such wonderful and inclusive people who really wanna teach you their skills, who really want to, to share the experience of creating and sharing public art for the public good. And I encourage everybody to go out and do an art walk and talk to some of these, um, other painting weirdos. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody, for, um, for your reports and for watching tonight. And I will adjourn the meeting. See you in two weeks-ish.